Reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July 30th, 2025, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the superintendent and student board member update.
For my part, very short. It is July 30th, so there's one more day in the month of July, and then August. Poof. We updated you on all the summer projects and activities that are going on. We'll do that again at the next board meeting. There's a lot of work going on across St. Mary's County Public Schools. Right now, it's really a great deal of our focus here in the Smoakley Building is making sure that we have all of our vacancies filled, and we are in fantastic shape for this year. We only are looking for two elementary education teachers, one high school science, one JROTC instructor, Captain Randall, finding somebody to come after Captain Randall in that fantastic Navy JROTC program. So, we want to make sure we get that right. One media specialist, one middle school English, one middle school math, one middle school science. Occupational therapist, social emotional learning coach for special education. Now, we didn't need any at the last time, but we are promoting people, we are promoting our special education teachers into other roles, so we're creating vacancies amongst ourselves. So, for, I think, and then two and a half speech language pathologists, but that's something usually, that's not an unexpected vacancies. But if you are not on the certificated side, and you want to look at some of the other support professionals, we are looking for an accountant, we are looking for building services staff, both building service workers and assistant managers, bus drivers and bus assistants, food service staff always, instructional pair educators, both regular instruction and special education, their secretarial staff, special education pair educators, and teacher apprentices. And all of this is available on the SMCPS website, www.smcps.org. And when you hit that, you're going to see a big red, we stopped, we used to have a big red button, now we have a big red box. So, hit the big red box, and all of these positions will be listed. And specifically for support professionals, it breaks it out very specifically, teaching vacancies, then you go in and you can find them there as well. So, a lot of work's been done, a little bit of work left to go, we are in great shape. Here we are in July, actually, the 11-month staff report, that's actually incorrect, right? Did 11-month staff report?
Today.
Today, yeah, yeah. Whoops. I was thinking it was July 1st, it's not. They're actually here today. So, and new school leaders are on Friday. So, of the 32 people in new seats from the administrative and supervisory ranks, specifically those that are school-based, they're going to be meeting with Dr. Beavers and really getting a jump start before we get into next week, which is the official first full week of August, where we start with ANS opening session day one, ANS opening session day two, where it is just a fire hose of all the new things that we have to look forward to in the upcoming year, as we prepare to welcome teachers and then students. And on Wednesday, new teacher orientation, that first day, they're coming in and we listen to them. And they said, so we bring all of our new teachers in and we put them in a, at the doorman room and at the Forest Center, we talked to them for the whole day, and they were itching all day long. What they really wanted to do was they wanted to go to their schools and be in their classrooms and walk that space and meet new faces. And so, we flipped it. So, the first day that new teachers come in, we give them the day to be in their schools and to think about their classroom and kind of to orient themselves. And then in earnest on the 7th, that's when we're going to have the kickoff welcoming at the doorman center. On Friday, they have, they work specifically with content specialists. They actually have a boot camp on the 11th and 12th, but that's by their choice. On August 12th, that's Chopticon, that's the Chesapeake Public Charter School Open House. I'm having a-
Chopticon could open early.
I am, I am having a couple of the time, yeah. So, Chesapeake Public Charter School Open House, and then on Wednesday, the 13th, all of our teachers report, that's the first day for fall sports tryouts, that's the Chesapeake Public Charter School Official Open, and we also have a Board of Ed meeting that AM. So, we'll have a lot to share on that day as we are getting very, very close to schools. Teacher in Service on the 14th, Teacher in Service on the 15th. Home Access Center opens on Friday PM, so that everybody can see who their teachers are and what periods they have, what classes, and we will be ready for all of that. And then on the 18th and 19th, it's the Teacher Professional Day, and that's when we go back and we're changing schedules and getting everything lined up just right. All the school open houses will be held on that day. The 19th, we're cleaning up and getting ready, and on the 20th, we open. So, get all your summer fun out now, because right around the corner, we're going to be welcoming back all of our staff and students. And we couldn't be, I think we are really, really ready, and it's going to be a fantastic school year.
If you forgot your hack password, do it before Friday.
Do it before Friday, go in and get a look at it. And honestly, so as we're watching enrollment, we, if you have a child who might be eligible for pre-K, please fill out the application, hit our website. If you have a five-year-old at your house, and you intend to enroll them in St. Mary's County Public Schools, please, please contact the school, please go out there and do that. As you can see, we get really busy, it'll, it'll be a madhouse. And so, you're going to have to wait in a queue, and if you come out right now, this week, next week, people will be able to really take their time and talk with you, and really, you can, you can have a very leisurely enrollment with your, with your student. Do not wait until the 20th or the 18th or the 19th. Don't, don't show up at open house expecting to register your child. Certainly, you will be able to do it, but you will be waiting a bit, because we will be busy. So, please, 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 especially pre-K and kindergarten students, do not wait till the very last minute. And so, with that, I'm going to hand it off to the student member of the board, Ms.
All right, hi everyone. Good evening. First of all, as SMOB, I'm excited to announce that I have been appointed as the student member for the Accountability and Implementation Board, Pillar Five Advisory Committee. And so, on that board, I will be advising on governance and accountability under the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, so to especially like ensuring students and systems meet the educational reforms that are being in place through policy recommendations and feedback. So, as SMOB, I wanted to get more involved with the Blueprint and, you know, give feedback on how it affects Board of Education's, like St. Mary's County. But I'm also excited to bring back that knowledge back to our county in helping us shape our own policies. So, that's one of the exciting things-
That's going to be fantastic. So, when I was-
That's fabulous. We can't wait to have you on that board.
I heard about it early, and I was watching the AIB, and I'm like, oh my gosh! And then the Maryland State Board of Education, they also included an announcement on that as well. So, look at you. That's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you so much. And next, I've been preparing for the Maryland Association Student Council's Advance. So, that's a three-day retreat where student leaders from all across the state come together to learn how to be certified in presenting workshops at our conferences. So, I'm excited to be recertified in doing that. I will also be sharing reports at our first Executive Board meeting of the year on behalf of the St. Mary's Association Student Councils, as well as gives update, updates on my role as the Slacker or State Legislative Affairs Coordinator for MASC. And then lastly, just getting ready for the new school year, Dr. Smith and I have created an acronym to encompass, encompass the next school year and to bring on for our school visits. So, it's going to be SMCPS Leads, which is We Listen, We Empower, We Aspire, and We Deliver. And so, that, we're really excited to do that, and we're really excited to bring that to our elementary schoolers.
We have cared, we have heard, and now we lead. I think that's, that's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm excited. And then I created feedback forms for Slack, school visits, and I even put up a feedback form for all the students in our county to fill out for me, which can be found on my Instagram bio. I'm also getting ready myself for the new school year, so I'm doing my summer reading, and I'm fixing my sleep schedule, because it's really bad right now. But I'm excited to come back and see my teachers and see my friends. But yeah, that's all I've done for SMOB. Thank you guys so much.
I would add to that, that you will be attending the Maryland Association of Boards of Education SMOB training. It was Vanessa who recognized that they had scheduled it initially for the first day of school. And so, I reached out to them, and they were able to change it. So, she goes that Monday up to MAB, and will spend a good part of the day with SMOBs from across the state. So, I know it will be a really rewarding and interesting experience for you.
And Vanessa's very generous to say that we both worked together on this, but this is, this is hers. And I think that that's fantastic.
Yeah.
And I love that we finish with, of all of our work, we deliver. So, you're going to, you're going to hear about all the fantastic things that, that we accomplish. And it'll, it's going to be quite a list, I can guarantee it. Thank you.
Okay, we have no recognitions, no public hearing, any public comment. Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for July 16th, 2025, personnel teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, St. Mary's County School Bus Contractors Health and Welfare Trust for 2025-2026, and Department of Information Technology, Microsoft Software Contract. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have two action items this evening. First one is getting close to the start of school, school bus contracts. Mr. Thompson is under the weather, so we have Ms. McCord.
Good evening. So, before you, this evening, we have a request for the approval of the bus contract, for the regular bus contractor agreements, as well as the spare bus contractor agreements. As you go through the budget process, you've already worked through all of the details of the financial components of the contracts, but this is for the formal purchasing approval. We do have 41 school bus contractors, and that entails 164 regular route school buses, 29 special needs route school buses, as well as 48 spare school buses. We have 12 replacement school buses, 21 six-year contracts for renewal, as well as 48 spare bus agreements. Embedded in the formula includes the PVA, the per-vehicle allotment, which includes the use of a prime rate for calculation. The prime rate decreased to 8%. Previously, it was 8.5%, and the bus prices increased by 5%. We do have certain uncertain areas in future years that we need to be mindful of, and that's with regard to the Environmental Protection Agency, electric vehicle mandates, as well as potential for steel increases as a result of tariffs. Additionally, in the formula, we have the hourly payments to contractors. That includes the driver rate of $30.10, which includes a 26.5% fixed cost increase or component, a tenant rate of $24.47 plus the 26.5% fixed cost. Both of those rates represent a 3% increase over the prior year, and the maintenance rate increase of 3 cents per mile. We have the retention payments included in the formula, that's at $5,000 per year, operations payment increase of $140 per bus, and no increase in the stipend payment. So, with that, we request your approval.
Any questions?
No questions, thank you so much.
Josh?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
None, thank you.
Ken?
I'm all good, thank you.
Then may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the bus contractor agreement and spare bus agreement for the 2025-2026 school year as detailed on the list provided by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And next, we have Mrs. Howe and Mr. Watson on our facility utilization, districting, contract awards.
So, good evening. We are here tonight about the Facility Utilization and School Boundary Consulting Contract Award. The purpose of this contract would be to award to Cannon Washington and Mount for a base bid of $199,860 with a contingency of $48,045 for the consulting services that would include identifying, justifying, and recommending school boundary recommendations for the most effective and efficient use of capital resources in a fiscally responsible manner, as well as remaining flexible to appropriately respond to conditions in our student population, facilities, and our community over time. This will result in the development of optimized use of our facilities to include potential closures and boundary realignment recommendations for our 27 schools that maximizes opportunities for student achievement and allows for the best delivery of instructional program within our available facility and financial resources.
So, part, excuse me, part of that project's scope and goals, obviously, we're going to be doing a complete detailed analysis of available space. We previously were with Cannon Design for our facility utilization study a few years ago, so they have intimate knowledge of our system, which is really outstanding for our timeframe here and our purpose. Further, we would examine and recommend facility utilization options, school boundary changes, that would maximize all of our services across our schools. Obviously, we have some schools that are more populated than others, so that would be a big consideration in maximizing our facility usage. We would examine and provide fiscal and operational impacts. We would coordinate, manage, and facilitate external and internal presentations and community engagement. That's that piece, Ms. Bailey, that you had referenced, to make sure that we are very forthcoming and with all of our information and the scope of our project. We would have participation in internal and external meetings by internal staff, by school representatives, by parent representatives all across our communities. And we facilitate presentation of recommendations for public hearing, for public consumption throughout that process. Our project schedule for this is a rather tight timeframe. If you backwards map this, and you look at the bottom first of April 2026, that's when we would need to have SMCPS notification of new assignments to parents, whatever those new assignments may be. So, if you backwards map that, we have a very short window here to accomplish this. So, July, here, we're anticipating notice to proceed with our consultant group and the work that our system needs to do. July through September, we'll have consultant evaluations, we'll look at facilities, we'll look at boundaries, we'll look at population, schools and potential school closures, potential movements from schools to schools, depending on overpopulation in some of those areas. October through December, we will hold community engagement sessions throughout the county to receive feedback of our proposed plans. We anticipate that looking like presentations at all three high schools that would coordinate all of the feeder schools to, to that high school for those presentations. And then January, final option report presented to the committee and to the superintendent, moving forward to February and March before the Board of Education, before any changes are made through April, where we would notify our parents. Our procurement method for this, we put out RFP, SMCPS 2026 CPFAC, Request for Proposals to eMaryland Marketplace. We had the interest, we had four companies respond to the RFP. We did evaluation of the fee proposal, we did evaluation of their technical proposal, and then we reviewed references and made some contacts with some of those companies and some of those references in other counties where these companies had done similar work.
So, the proposals were due on July 8th, and as Mr. Watson said, four consultants provided us with technical proposals. The committee reviewed those technical proposals first, and based on the ranking that was done on that, we then entered into pricing proposals. Three consultants were moved on to the pricing proposals. One firm was deemed by the Purchasing Department as non-responsive, because they did not provide a pricing proposal. Once we, the committee completed their evaluation, we formalized that recommendation, and then Mr. Watson and I interviewed the highest-ranking firm. The committee membership was made up of Ms. McCord, our Deputy Superintendent of Fiscal and Supporting Services, Mr. Watson and myself, and Ms. Lumpkins and Ms. Hayden, Capital Planning Specialist in the Department of Capital Planning. Based on the technical and pricing proposals and the interview that we conducted, Cannon Washington Incorporated was selected as the top-ranked firm. Cannon Washington is, is a component of Cannon Design, which is a global practice with regional offices in Canada, the US, and India. Cannon Washington is located in Arlington, Virginia, and was incorporated in the state of Maryland on December 21st, 1981. So, they've been doing business in the DMV for quite a long time. The proposal that Cannon did put in included a collaborative partnership with Lee Wong, an independent GIS contractor who is, was also involved in our facility utilization study that we did, and brings a large wealth of technical expertise in the area of boundary realignment. Cannon Design is consistently ranked one of the top firms for education design. Their team of planners and designers have carried out strategic planning and design services for 19 school systems, representing over 3,600 schools in the past eight years alone. They offer a full range of services from facility planning and utilization, school boundaries, and interior design. So, not only do they bring the technical expertise into the fold with regards to school boundaries and facility utilization, they also understand the impact of buildings on instruction, and they bring that wealth of knowledge with them. With that in mind, Interior Design Magazine's 2020-24 Top Giants List names Cannon Design as the number-one education interior design firm for the second year in a row, and overall for design, they rank number 12 for interior design. We did, as part of the request for proposals, ask for recent work that they've done, and this is just a very small sampling of the work that they have provided, that they've done over the last five years. After we interviewed them, I did contact each of these, they listed us as one of theirs for the facility utilization, but I did contact each and every one of these contacts. And the glowing response was, there was a really small district that had only 600 students, and then we went up to one that had 60,000. And the growing piece of information that I got back was the professionalism, the caring for the community. Every single person that I talked to said, when they presented in the community engagement, they knew the area, they knew the names of the schools. It was a very personal engagement that they had with the community. In Baltimore, they just completed a multi-year improvement. There is a quote there about Mr. Mills, who will be one of our lead individuals, and they talk about the professionalism that they bring to the table. I think we both experienced that in terms of their interview. One of the things they said is they want to make sure they're listening and hearing what our community has to say. So, with that said, they have presented who their project team will be, and do apologize, I'm, I'm learning these names, there are some, some challenging ones for me. So, Maria Gordaketskia will be the client leader. She is the person who will be responsible completely to ensure that our project happens. Kia St. Louis will be the project manager, our prime contact, and project leadership will be Paul Mills. And then there's a project team. So, I wanted to give you a little further information to be able to make that connection with them. Maria Gordaketskia is the client leader, she has 19 years of experience. Kia St. Louis will be our project coordinator and our prime contact. Her job is to ensure that if we have any issues, she's the person I'm going to call, and she's going to make sure that it happens. She has four years of experience with Cannon. Paul Mills was the lead on the project that we previously did. He has 26 years of experience, did our project, and also was one of the leads on the Baltimore County Multi-Year Improvement Plan, and understands the impacts that we have to factor in from the IAC in terms of capacity and utilization. Lee Wong is a GIS data visualization independent contractor. He has 22 years of experience. He was also associated with our project in the Baltimore County project. Some of the, in the presentations we've done before, you've commented on some of the graphics that we've used. That is Mr. Wong's work. He will make sure that when we graphically display information to our community, that it will be easy to, to read and understand. Kushan Dave is redistricting support, has 14 years of experience, and has worked independently from Cannon Design, but now with them, has done work in Anne Arundel, Montgomery, and PG County. Monica Pastacore has 18 years. She was also associated with the Baltimore Project and then another project at the Polytechnic Institute. And Olamide, Olamrancosabi will be our document support and has seven years of experience. So, they're bringing a very wide breadth of knowledge to our, our county. So, the proposal that they have is for a lump sum fee for the services outlined in the RFP of $199,860. They do have some value-added services, which we're asking for as a contingency, if we opt to do them, for $48,045. It would be for additional meetings, a data toolkit, and a dashboard that we could utilize. And as we start with our kickoffs, if approved, we would then start to look at these as options if we wanted to move forward. We currently have a budget of $250,000 with our proposal of $199,860 and a contingency of $48,045. It would leave us a balance of $2,095. And with that, Mr. Watson and I can stand for any questions you may have.
I have one question. So, who do you identify, who have you identified to be part of the group that you are presenting the community engagement sessions to at the high schools? For example, will it only be administration, or potentially include students in that conversation as well?
So, as proposed, so the committee is under the purview of Dr. Smith, and those still need to be worked out, who the actual committee members will be. The community engagement, the way that they are currently envisioned, and we'll have more discussions with Cannon, would be three consecutive nights, one at Chopticon, one the next night at Leonard Town, then at Great Mills. That would be done early on. They've talked about surveys that they would do for the community that would present that first plan to them in a community session. Anyone is entitled to go to any one of those. If you want to go to all three, you would be able to do that. From that, they'll come back with information, they'll continue to develop work, and then we would hold one more of those later in the November, December, same thing, three nights, three schools. And then they would continue to do work leading up to a public hearing in January.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I'm very impressed with Cannon. It looks like they'll do great work. My one concern, though, is, is I don't want, you know, there's going to be a lot of information for everyone to absorb, and I don't want, you know, a 500-page or 150-slide presentation. You know, I, is it possible to get updates throughout the process of some of the data that they're looking at, and, you know, maybe some preliminary stuff?
So, the way that we do redistricting will be, we've always done that. We, we have stops and checks and balances along the way. The way, because we're talking such a large scope, the way we've envisioned it is a website off of a page on our website that would have everything that you would need to know, all of the information that is currently readable to be portrayed, the schedule for the timeline for the meetings, frequently asked questions. And we did have a conversation today with IT and with Barrett about the website, and there is a way to solicit community information through that as well. Then we're going to be looking at all of our social media, so we will be disseminating a lot of information along the entire process.
Okay. And can we, can we expect as a board periodic updates on-
Of course.
Some of those things?
Of course.
Okay.
That is built into the, to the timeline.
So, our goal wouldn't be to provide, like, here's 500 pieces of information we want you to process. We want to scale that down to the most pertinent piece of information that people can actually process and-
The only reason I had a concern about that is because, you know, it's a crunch time, right?
Yes.
You know, you're looking at-
Yep.
Less than a year, which is impressive for a consultant, if they think that they can get this kind of a project done in that time. But I just want to make sure we're, we're staying up to date on that. So, thank you very much.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to the process. I do have one question about possible growth, because this is a big move. So, will they be, is there information out there enough that they can be looking and reviewing that also to make sure that their proposals-
Yes.
Will?
So, I mean, what we can provide, we have a lot of, from my office, we have a lot of- we have a lot of data that we have to provide them on our buildings, on our growth patterns, our enrollment. They're going to take a deep dive into looking at our enrollment and our projections and capacity and utilization of our buildings. What we have is the information that we can get from Land Use and Growth Management. In conjunction with that, there's also the comprehensive plan that is going on for the county, and we will link them to that as well, because then they can see what is being said in the community about that as well. So there is a wealth of information. The reality is this about residential growth. We can get something approved, and then it's really up to the economy and the growth of the county as to what happens. So we can tell them about growth. It really is then, it is somewhat subjective to know when that growth is going to actually occur, but we can look at past trends and the information we have there as well.
And part of our enrollment curve, if I'm wrong, Kim, is we actually do dive into birth rates as well.
Exactly.
So that's all even part of our, you know, enrollment projections and things like that. We consider a lot of detailed information.
Cohort survivability rate.
Cohort surviv-, I'd love that you know that.
Yeah, it sounds, it seems, but that really is. When you look at the amount of live births per year,
Yes.
the students that enroll, who withdraw, and then, and then, and enter, the cohort survivability rate is one of the things that kind of drives all the projections.
When we, when we look at our enrollment projections, we are actually looking at how many students per school, per grade, survive from going from kindergarten to first grade, first grade to second. And we do that for every grade level at every school, taking into account birth rate changes and other things that may happen.
For those who are not aware, would you explain how you sit on the Technical Evaluation Committee?
Sure. So the county has what they call Technical Evaluation Committee, and it's made up of state and county agencies, such as Department of Public Works for Roads, State Highway, Soil Conservation District. And the school system is a participant in that. So every new development that comes in, whether it's residential or commercial, that comes in to go through a process for concepts, site plan approvals, or to move forward with approval, we get that to review in my office. Historically, our comments are related to bus stops and how that interacts with our ability to pick students up. Others are looking at it from a, you know, different perspective. But we do know everything that's coming in, and we track all of that information as well as everything gets approved through the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, which means that it's actually moving forward. Sometimes we may see something come through the TEC as a concept, and we don't see it come back again for five or eight years.
Or 20.
So we're tracking. We track birth rate, we track building permits, occupancy permits, and everything that comes through Land Use and Growth Management and the town of Leonardtown.
But that, but that committee that you're on is only a county committee. Does that also incorporate the town of Leonardtown?
So they have a different process.
Right.
So they, we work with the town on their planning as well, and we get their information for their projects.
Because that was a problem that we ran into at the Commissioner meeting two years ago. Because what, what the town of Leonardtown has approved going down Hollywood Road and through Clark's Run was never, was never meshed in with what the county was planning. We had it.
Yes.
But the county didn't.
So in terms of adequate public facilities, those are for county projects that come through the county Land Use and Growth Management. It does not include the projects that come through the town.
Right.
That is something we track separately.
And some of our schools cross county and town.
Yes, they do.
Sounds so simple.
Mary, Kathy?
Thank you. You provided a wealth of information to the board on this, of the company and what they're going to do, the timeline. You did an excellent job on this, and I know you will continue to provide valuable, valuable information to the board in the future. And I look forward to a really good process where all voices will be heard, and then we can make a decision in the end what best, what works best for the students. And that's our goal, what works best for the students. So thank the both of you for bringing this forward and doing a good job of giving the board a lot of exhibits and information. Thank you.
The community engagement meetings that you mentioned, are there plans to televise and livestream those?
Of course.
Absolutely.
All right.
Also follow up with those on our website.
Yes.
Then post those on our website for those who may not have been able to either be there a person or watch it live either. So those will be housed as well.
The way we kind of envision those is kind of like a public forum. There will be, you know, information given. There may be times when the consultant asks specific questions that they would like answered to gain information, or then we can accept feedback through the consultant as well.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
So, all right, so the first blush of the 2050 Plan was presented yesterday at the County Commissioner meeting, the first batch of results. And then, so at least that's good, that, you know, they'll have all that information.
This is so, this is very well-aligned.
Right.
To have this work going forward at the same, at the same time.
And then somewhere, and I can't remember where, I read that one of the individuals on the team had, they said that they have been working knowledge of how the school budget, or how the schools are funded through the state of Maryland. And I can't remember who that was.
Mr. Mills.
Okay, great. All right, so now, on the bullet, on what the goals are, and I'm on their actual presentation, or on our RFP, that it says that we want them to examine and recommend facility utilization options and school boundary change options that maximize services and efficiencies and increase opportunities for student success. So does that also include a finance and funding aspect of that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So where that would come into would be any realignment or closures that we would do. We would have a fiscal impact on that as well. The other piece of it is transportation cost. If, you know, we've done that in the past with our redistricting, we've, one of the things we've looked at is the impact on the bus contracts.
But the, where that drives also is obviously with Blueprint for Maryland's Future and the AIB, each child has a different monetary value.
That's what I'm.
And each child's monetary value ultimately determine the operating budget for each one of the schools. That's why we, you cannot embark on something like this without looking at everything and having all the detailed information before you, before you move forward. So that will be one of the things that we bring to the consultants is to recognize. They always do student demographics, and to the greatest extent possible, try to balance and align and build a comprehensive school that best reflects the larger community. We're going to lay on top of that, oh, by the way, funding also then follows.
Right.
So it is, it is very, very, very complex work. And I think we're the only school system in the state of Maryland that's taking this very large look at all of this. And I have to tell you, what makes me happiest is right down there, we have a student member of the board and a high school senior who's going to be at the AIB Pillar Five, which is all about this, this, this grand reconsidering of educational funding where the money follows the child, and the money is substantially different based on that individual child's need. This is going to be, again, I think this is going to be incredibly complex work. It's going to require us to have the sharpest of pencils and the, and the most thoughtful of minds. But I don't want to, we cannot throw around, we're going to close this school. 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 St. Mary's County isn't like that. We don't, we don't throw away anything. And we don't close things unless we absolutely know that it's the right thing to do, not only for students, but for parents and the communities that they, that those schools serve. So we have five smaller schools, and all small schools in the state of Maryland, with the way the blueprint is written and funding flows are always at a remarkable disadvantage. And so really, what we're going to be doing is working with consultants and some of the very best minds to be able to demonstrate back, perhaps, all the way up to the state level, why things need to be considered, perhaps even with a, with a greater amount of detail. I know that they've talked about looking at some of the funding relative to small schools and figuring out some multiplying factor. We're going to have so much data to be able to drive, to drive that. It's going to be, it's going to be great. This legislative session is going to be something.
A barn burner.
It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of stuff.
It's coming up on election year, so.
Yep.
It might just be a stalemate across the board.
We will be, we will be in Annapolis, I could guarantee.
So one of the things we had a conversation with Canon about was the plans need to be reflective of where we are today. But things could change in five years, or six years, or seven years. So one of the things that we discussed with them was, while we need to come up with a plan for today, we also want their insight into what it may look like if growth were to respur and things were to change, what options would we have? So I think from our perspective, what we want is, you know, in depth, look now, but also looking to the future and where we can be. Talked to Washoe County in Reno, Nevada. That's exactly what Canon did for them as well. They looked at where they were. They were the one that had quite a few students, and they actually recommended it, and are in the process of currently implementing a reduction of 13 schools out of their 100. However, as they continue on, now growth has changed a little, and there's some changes. So what I think we want is flexibility. We want to know where we can be and where we can go and get all the information we possibly can to make those decisions, short and long term.
I think the two most interesting slides that you shared with us, I believe our last meeting, was what would have happened had years ago, we actually gone ahead and built that fourth high school, that at this point in time, we would find ourselves lacking the seats that we need. The decisions that were made to expand our three comprehensive high schools and do the work on the Forest Center has made all the difference.
And that's one of the conversations that we had with them and one that we will continue to. At elementary school is easier if we get capacity. It's a smaller number. It requires less of an infrastructure than it does at a high school. So elementary schools are easier to add on to. Middle schools get a little more complicated. But high schools are challenging, especially when you look at the model where we have to have half of those students in place and the rest to come before it's completed.
Yeah.
That makes that challenge. So one of the things that I really want to look at is I would like to see what their options are moving forward if there was to be high school growth in the future.
Good. All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Award of Contract SMCPS 2026, CPFAC, for a facility utilization and school boundary study to Canon Washington Incorporated in the amount of $199,860 and a project contingency of $48,045. Further, the board authorize, or authorizes use of the hourly rate pricing on this contract to purchase additional services from Canon Washington Incorporated as needed and as funding permits.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Right, thank you very much. All right, we have no informational items this evening. Our future board meeting is Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, with executive session beginning at 8:00 a.m. and the meeting beginning at 9:00. And with that, we are adjourned. But.
Ta-da, the backside.
Flip my page. We do have a work session on policy JFI student debt. And I believe that is Dr. Beavers.
Mr. Watson gets the.
Once again, Mr. Watson. I'm the jaws of leaving, reeling you back in.
Okay, ready to go?
Yep.
All right. So Dr. Beavers and I are here to present Student Debt Policy Recommendations, our first reading. Just a little background into that. I hate to keep saying since COVID, but since COVID, we've implemented, obviously, one-to-one technology for almost all of our students, for all of our students at that time, K through 12. And with that has come some increases in not only just technology debt, but other debt as well across the school system. So we were talking about some situations where we could look at our internal processes and kind of capitalize on some of our existing policies. For example, this policy is cross-referenced in your notes that was presented to you all. Policy JF student responsibilities. Line, or number five reads, "Each student has a responsibility to appropriately care for school property. Students will be assessed for any lost, damaged, or vandalized school property." That is really the only kind of language and information that we currently have at our disposal for, for student debt and accountability in policy JF. So upon discussion, we felt the need to pull out a separate student debt policy and a regulation hopefully to follow if approved by the Board of Education. So our purpose, again, is to review our practices related to student debt, student debt collections, and also student accountability of that debt. We have a committee that just met for our second meeting. The members are there. We have a wide range of folks on that, from fiscal services to middle and high school principals, to assistant principals, to supervisors, to students, excuse me, to bank personnel at schools, finance folks, food folks, et cetera. So we have a wide range of people represented on this work group. And our plan is to have this work group meet throughout this school year, FY '26, to continue this work. Step one of that has been our goal to establish a working policy outside of policy JF, policy JFI, which we are presenting here before you today. We have met twice, like I said, we'll be throughout FY '26. And then our timeline for that is, obviously, our first reading is tonight. Next would be our public comment, hopefully, on August 13th. And then we'll be before you again for potential action on August 27th. So typically, when we do a board policy, there's purple and everything's scratched out, new red language. Well, since this is all brand new, everything is red. So unfortunately, we are going to be reading to you a little bit about that today, right from our slides, from our policy. So of course, our title, JFI student debt. Our policy statement, our purpose. "The purpose of this policy is to outline the Board of Education of St. Mary's County, the Board's expectations for the management of student debt. This policy is intended to promote transparency, fairness, and support for all students while maintaining fiscal responsibility." Policy statement. "The purpose of this policy is to establish clear guidelines and procedures regarding student-related debts incurred within the school system. The goal is to promote responsible financial management, ensure equitable treatment of all students, and clarify the Board's position on the collection and management of school-related debts. The Board delegates the Superintendent of Schools and staff the responsibility for developing and publishing the specific regulations that will apply to student debts in schools."
Policy statement continued. Number one, "The school system recognizes that students may incur debts related to school activities, including but not limited to meal accounts, lost or damaged technology, lost or damaged school property, fees associated with extracurricular activities, library fines, and other approved charges. Number two, "The school system shall communicate clearly with students and parents or guardians about any owed debts, including the amount owed, the reason for the debt, and the procedures for payment or resolution. Number three, "Efforts may be made to assist students and families in resolving debts, including providing payment plans or alternative options where feasible, to avoid undue hardship. Number four, "The school system will follow applicable laws and regulations regarding the collection of school debts, ensuring that collection practices are fair, respectful, and non-discriminatory. Number five, "Students with outstanding debts may be restricted from participating in extracurricular activities or ineligible for other privileges or benefits until debts are resolved. Number six, "The school system shall maintain confidentiality regarding students' debt information and ensure that debt collection practices do not stigmatize or unfairly target students." Definitions. So student debt is defined as any financial obligation owed by a student or their parent guardian to the school system resulting from incurred charges, such as meal accounts, lost or damaged technology, lost or damaged school property, fees associated with extracurricular activities, library fines, or other approved charges related to school activities. Debt collection is defined as the process undertaken by the school system or its agents to recover owed funds, which may include notification letters, electronic communication, phone calls, or other appropriate methods, such as collection agencies. Hardship, defined as a situation where the student or family experiences financial difficulty that makes paying owed debts for unintended acts challenging. And expectations for evaluation, review, and updates. This policy will be reviewed and evaluated according to the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Review Schedule and/or as federal and state laws and regulations change."
So that would be the policy that we would bring back, and we are. So that would be the policy that we would bring back and we are available for any questions or comments you may have.
Okay, so we're going to kind of be disorganized here, right? So we're not jumping all over this and asking same thing. So first question is going to be on, any questions on slide two? Right, we're going to go through this slide by slide and that way we'll, everyone can, you guys can take notes and it's somewhat consistent. So, all right, any questions or comments on the purpose members meetings or timeline? Okay, moving on. I assume we all like the title, student debt. All right, purpose. Any questions, comments on this one? Okay, fine, true. All right, policy statement. Nope. All right, made it through, six, slide six of ten. All right, number one, and number one, two, and three on slide number six.
So I know that I, well, I'm not sure how I can word this, but I know that when students go through the line, they can't be told at the end if they don't have any money or something, they can still have their food and there's no collection needed or anything. So does the meal accounts really need to be in there? Or yes, because it has to be defined because the parents are responsible?
So yes, I mean, the lunch cost is still the responsibility of the parent or of the child. So that child does build up a negative lunch account balance that is tracked. If, again, if a student or a parent fills out the proper documentation and they are awarded, they would be considered a free and reduced meals or child. And so we urge people to fill that out as much as possible. We send out a lot and a lot of communication on that throughout the schools. We know things and amounts have changed over the years and some years you qualify and some years you don't. We do have some CEP schools where every student qualifies. And we do run into some hardships where a student would transfer from a CEP school to a non-CEP school, where they might be used to getting that free meal because they're a CEP school and now at their new school, they don't. So we again encourage that child to really fill out that documentation, that paperwork to submit to see if they qualify. And oftentimes, that's sometimes where our debt grows because parents and guardians don't necessarily fill that out or they don't qualify when they do fill that out. So yes, the the account does go into the negative for food services. That is money that is tracked by food services.
And and that is money that must be paid by the school system. So so for this year alone, I think we're we're over a hundred thousand dollars. So these are students who are not free and reduced meal students, they're ineligible. And they have accumulated over the year about a hundred thousand dollars worth of debt that the school system must then cover, must pay at the end of, at the end of the year. So and we look to our neighbors who are accumulating a much larger amount of debt. So it's really, it's really, that really is a challenge because obviously we we've done a great deal as a state and as a county not to stigmatize or penalize a child. And we recognize how important it is that every child gets a, gets an appropriate lunch because if you're hungry, you're really going to struggle to concentrate in class. That being said, we're accumulating, we've got students who are accumulating a substantial amount of debt and and parents aren't necessarily being as responsive as as they need to. So to 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 take this out of this policy, I think we'd be, I think that that's a, it's a, it's a large component piece. And that was one of the first things that that came forward because we've, we've been tracking it and that amount has grown substantially over the last several years where it just appears that nobody seems to care that your child is accumulating hundreds of dollars worth of meal debt. So again, I, it's, it's, it'll be the board's policy. And if you'd like to have that broken out or done in a different way, certainly we can, we can entertain that, look at it.
But you are correct, Ms. Andrews, we're not denying anyone a meal.
No.
I think I just wanted that cleared up more for the public to hear it, that, you know, children are well taken care of.
And I want to thank the school system for efforts to remind the parents that it's important to fill out the free and reduced lunch form. They may think they don't qualify, but once they fill it out, they may not qualify for a free lunch, but they may be able to qualify for a reduced price meal. So efforts need to be more aggressive in making sure that they need to fill this out at the beginning of the school and anytime they can fill it out, when their economic condition changes.
Yes, correct.
Then maybe at earlier, they didn't qualify, but because a parent lost a job or sick or whatever, they fill it out, they may possibly qualify, but they must fill out the form. So I applaud the superintendent and staff and the schools for making sure they send it out in the smores or whatever to remind them, please.
Well, the problem now is the forms are electronic, it's not a paper form anymore, right?
Right, but we will, we, we, we do assess.
I know you do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But to Mary's point, like at the open houses, if you have a table set up outside of the cafeteria when everyone's rolling through that open house, it's not really conducive to have someone go up and ask for, you know, a forms, you know, to fill it out there. It's, it's very public, is what I'm saying. So what it probably needs to do is, you know, either be in a guidance office in the off, you know, somewhere else because, you know, at the open houses I've been to, they're right there outside where every single person is walking by, so.
And we do have them available print line in schools.
Right, but I'm just saying like for, like for the, for the, for the, for the new families to a new school, that's probably not the most private place to to do all of that. So.
And also.
Oh, you got, well, I have two.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, because I jumped in on you, you keep going.
Okay, and also it said efforts may be made to assist students and families. Number three on page six. I think since you do it anyway, it should be efforts shall be made or will be made because you do that anyway. You go out of your way, you bend over backwards to make sure to help families resolve the debt. And they need to contact the school if something changed that they can't pay for. I mean, technology loss, student computer is broken and they have to pay for it, or books. They need to let the school know and be honest. Look, I lost my job or whatever, I got a new job, I don't have any money, can we work out something? Not saying something is not helping the situation. The parent or guardian needs to call the school or whatever and say, look, I know I owe this debt. What can you do to help me? They have to be honest and say it. Ignoring the problem is not going to make it go away.
So as part of the regulation, we'll get a little bit deeper into that.
Okay.
And part of the reason we, we struggle with shall versus may a lot in situations, and I'll just give a quick example, when you have a student whose laptop is broken or unintentionally damaged, right? That may be something that a principal would consider that as an option, working with that family as a fee waiver or something like that. Whereas if a student then purposely breaks that or uses a TikTok challenge where they stick a, you know, a paperclip or a pencil into the port and it damages the whole laptop, then that would be a situation, again, that the principal of that school would may consider differently. So that term may versus shall tries to take into consideration some of those situations.
I think regardless of the loss, if the parent doesn't have the money and the child broke the computer deliberately, there needs still effort shall be made to assist the parent in resolving that. Set up a payment plan or whatever, they say, I don't have money. I don't have the money to pay it in full right now, but can we work on this issue together? So I think the word shall be made, even though the student did the wrong thing, to help them to resolve it because they don't have the money to put out all at once.
Understood.
So that's the difference.
Yep.
And and it does.
That's certainly our intent.
And.
I know, yeah.
And if you put shall there, it, again, it ends with, to avoid undue hardship and you've defined hardship in the definition. So it does kind of blend those two together. And and it definitely solidifies the board's intent that staff will work with all families to 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 mitigate.
Yep. Thank you.
And I, I kind of like the word will as opposed to shall, but I, I think what I would ask is for you to go back and consider the possibilities and then bring forward a recommendation to the board with respect to the most appropriate word to get across the sentiment that we're trying to express.
So what is the difference between shall and will? I mean.
That's what they're going to tell.
Right.
Come back to us with.
Well, some, someone here already say shall.
Yeah.
And some of them say will, so.
Shall has the force of law. When, when, when you, you say that we shall, that means that you, you will. Without, without any, without any vagaries. So and that's why it's the school system may communicate clearly. No, the school system shall, it's, it's an absolute. And so to use the word shall there, I mean, that makes it definitive that if, that you, that we as a school system and the agents of the board will, will make, will assist families in resolving debts, including payment plans, alternative options to avoid undue hardship. So, you know, we can go back and wiggle the words back and forth, but the difference between will and shall, shall carries the, carries the weight, so.
My question is with respect in number one to the meal accounts and technology and so forth. Can you give us an understanding of how much this past year have accrued in those various areas?
We can provide some of that information. A lot of that work is going to be done throughout this year as we continue to, you know, gather that information. We have some information and I will note for our active students for technology alone. And this isn't just last year. This is, I want to try to explain this. If we have a rising senior, this, this, this debt is encompassing of that rising seniors debt from kindergarten all the way through.
Okay.
Right, so it's not just last year. So if it's a sixth grader, it's K through five's debt for that sixth grader, and that's across all schools, all kids. So our technology debt currently for active students in that situation, not just so ten, twelve years, depending on how long you've been with us, two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Just in technology.
For technology.
Yep. Keep in mind, you know, we didn't issue a lot of technology prior to twenty twenty-two post-COVID.
And those are active students.
Those are active.
The inactive students also carry debt.
Correct.
But they're no longer with us.
They're no longer with us.
So it's unresolved debt.
Unresolved.
And that is, that's almost a mirror number to the amount that's owed to us for active students.
Yep. And again, I just want to point out, not that that's all in one year, everyone, that's every student within SMCPS from their, depending on what grade they're in, from when they first started with us till now.
Unresolved.
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 Print resources, as you can, as you can imagine, has gone down significantly because, you know, we.
It's on the computer.
Books are checked out less from the library. There's not as many things that don't come back because everything's on the, on the computer. Is active students, same situation, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, so obviously much less. That's not inclusive and as Dr. Smith indicated earlier, our, our lunch debt is at one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Dr. Smith was very close to that current amount. What we are still trying to gather is other student-related debt associated with individual schools. For example, a high school, students are issued uniforms or equipment and some of those things, as you can imagine, don't come back. And so we're trying to tabulate that, that amount of debt as well. And that will be part of our work, of our work group throughout this fiscal year.
All right, thank you. That's all.
All right, nothing else for page six. Okay. Page seven. Or slide seven, sorry. Numbers four, five, and six. Dorothy broke her technology.
Yeah, that's it. Oh, no!
The screen, eighty dollars. I do, I, I do, this, it's kind of related to this, but when we develop the regulations, the list of charges or debts, you know, for things like computer screens, is that stagnant? Is that going to be put into the regulation? Because I think that probably needs to be revisited on a regular basis and not just in alignment with what the policy is.
So I would imagine that when we get to the regulation, it will be annually updated. Costs for will be, will be made, will be presented publicly before the onset of the school year. So, so if there is suddenly, you know, laptops start costing four times as much because whatever.
The tariffs.
Yes, yeah, and let's just leave that there.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. On number five on page seven. Student with outstanding debts may be restricted from participating in extracurricular activities or ineligible for other privileges or benefits until debts are resolved. Now, depending on what you mean by resolved, and to me, to take away the extracurricular activities for students because their parents don't have the money to pay off the debt seems unfair to the student, that the student is being a minor, is being punished for what the parent can't do. So, so when you say are resolved, do you mean paid in full or do you mean, is that what you mean?
So we.
Or do you mean until a plan has been established?
Yes, so if someone's actively, you know, attempting to pay, whether that's on a payment plan or whatever that may be, then those restrictions, you know, would be lifted at that time as long as they are actively, you know, attempting to work with the school or the school principal to, to, to pay off whatever that debt may be.
Okay, so it does something.
May I suggest that, so here we have may. We don't have will or shall. Students with outstanding debts, may, may, that gives us flexibility, allows us to kind of work through everything. Participating in extracurricular activities, no prom for you. No parking pass for you. Or become ineligible for other privileges or benefits until debts are resolved or are in an approved repayment plan, something, something like that. So, so it, it leaves the option for allowing us the latitude.
I would just say, or approved resolution. I don't really, I don't really think, because you're, you're saying that efforts in number three on the prior side that you may assist in that you have alternative options where feasible, right?
Yeah.
So let's not lock us into an approved payment plan, let's just say are resolved with.
Satisfactorily.
Yeah, or satisfactorily resolved or, or whatever. Because I don't want to lock us into payment, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because it might not be payment, it might be a situation that, you know, the debt is forgiven because of, you know, family circumstances. So I don't.
Often these things are, so can we go back and workshop this one?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
But we don't want it, we don't want to move that may to shall.
No, no, I don't think we do.
All right, because I.
No.
Make it a lot easier.
Well, with that said, not to pick apart our own policy, but the number four, it says will. Do you want that, the, looking at that for a shall as well? The school system shall follow applicable laws?
May follow?
The, the grammarian in me wants to have consistencies of wills and shells.
Okay.
So then it would be the school system shall follow applicable laws and then we, so we don't get wills and shells.
But at least it's the grammar guy and not the poet guy, so.
Well, there's.
Not yet.
There's a lot.
There's still time.
There's, there's, you can, you can drive a bus between will and shall.
Okay, anything else on slide seven?
So on number five, to follow up with Mary. Is there a nicer way to say may be restricted by any chance?
I think they're going to wordsmith that whole number five.
Oh, okay.
We, we tried some other words there.
Okay, okay, I mean.
Because it's, you know, restricted isn't, like, we don't want that to seem like it's a punishment, right?
Right.
We, there are certain things that we have to provide as a child within a school system. And anything extracurricular is not one of those things. And so like, Dr. Smith said it best, like, if you have hundreds or even thousands of dollars worth of debt, but you can buy a sixty-dollar parking pass or a prom ticket or whatever that may be.
And you have a car.
And you have a car, but yet you. And you have a car, but yet you have all of this debt, so like, those are things and factors that we have to consider at the school level if we're going to get a handle on the student debt and accountability.
And Ms. Andrews, we usually say denied. So it usually says, students with outstanding debts will be denied from participating, so we actually, we thought we were softening it with.
Right, okay.
Maybe restricted.
Look, the email for parking passes came out, what, in the middle of July? I wonder how many student debt accounts were paid off, because you are not eligible for a parking pass at any of the high schools.
It is, it is amazing how quickly that one comes.
Right, exactly.
And clearly, the high schools have, I would say, the most student debt, correct?
Yes.
You have the most opportunity, like, there's probably very, very little debt in elementary school.
Elementary is food.
Right.
And that's something we need to coordinate with parents, because that truly is a conversation relationship with parents. Middle school, it's usually through intentional negligence of students through TikTok challenges and pencils and all this stuff, because they're in middle school. And then in high school, it's, it's, it's an accumulation of a whole bunch of stuff.
And you get issued a lot more, you know, SMCPS equipment.
Stuff.
Stuff.
Lot more stuff?
Yes, a lot more stuff.
Lot more uniforms.
Yeah. Well, we used to, I mean, back in the day, when everybody got textbooks at the beginning of the year, and those textbooks were $175 apiece, and then you lost those textbooks, and then somebody else took your textbook, and then they tore out the number, and they tried to figure out a different way to put the number on, and they changed the number on the back of the bindings, then we'd have to be a super sleuth to figure out.
I mean, honestly, some of the textbooks, I mean, like, my son brings them home, and they come home in August, and then it's a scramble to find them in May.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they're under the bed, they're, you know.
Right.
Shoved under the dresser.
Because we have virtual, yeah, we have ebook versions of all of it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the binding isn't even broken. So, all right, anything else on slide seven?
I do have a quick question on line five. Does the privileges or benefits include things like graduation? Because, you know, some students may argue that graduation, like, you take the class, you get the credit, then you're, that's a, that's something that you, it's a given, and I know some school systems take graduation away from students who don't pay off their debt, so I was just wondering what that is for the school system.
So we have, we've discussed that as a potential option, but we haven't made any decisions in that regard quite yet.
Okay.
But I can assure you, in your senior year, as we hit may, you, we will be all over people that have debt, and we will do everything right up to the last moment to recover as much of that debt as we possibly can before commencement. But we also recognize that that's quite, it is the, it is the, it is the pinnacle moment for culminating time with St. Mary's County Public Schools, we wanna, we don't wanna deny anybody that, that great experience, because it cannot be recreated.
Well, one of the largest, one of the biggest, one of the biggest reasons for this policy is so that debts are collected along the way. You shouldn't get to your senior year and have a massive debt. If we're consistently, every time there's, you know, anything that's not required, and we're going, hey, listen, Vanessa, if you wanna do this, look, you have a $7 debt. Well, $7, that's a whole lot more, you know, palatable than when you get to, let's say you're leaving eighth grade, and you have a $450, you know, technology debt. We wanna, we don't want it to accumulate, we want it to be manageable the whole way, so.
Thank you.
All right, slide eight, definitions. Anyone?
No. I'm good.
I, the first one, I do have one. The financial obligation owed by a student. So the student is a student, so they're technically not really responsible for the debt, right? It's the parent or guardian. So it somehow needs to be the financial obligation.
Incurd by the student.
Incurd by the student.
And the responsibility.
Correct.
Of their parent or guardian.
Or however that, because then you have incurred in there twice, and, you know, Dr. Smith isn't gonna like that.
Yeah, you can't.
So we'll have to, we'll have to, the store is that sucker.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to find another way to have the incurred charges, or we can just, we can rework that.
Right.
Sentence.
It just, it sounds awkward.
The student incurs the charges, and the parent pays the bill.
Right.
That happens every day at my house.
I, I, it's, it's still happening.
Okay, anyone else?
Because we love our children.
Okay, anyone last slide?
So we just gonna work on, you're gonna work on number five, the wording.
Number five, and the first one.
And student debt one.
Student debt.
Okay.
And so this is a policy statement that you're working on, and then you're gonna add to it throughout the year?
So the policy statement.
To do guidelines and?
Right, we would create the regulation.
Right, okay.
And the internal processes and practices of the schools.
Right, so we, we own the policy, and then the superintendent of regulation, like, all the steps.
And that'll be on the board docs also, after it's completed.
Right, but we have, we have to get through this first, so we'll go through, by law, we have the public comment next meeting, the second reading, because all of our suggestions and anything that comes out of public comment will then be incorporated into the second reading before approval. Then once this is set, then they can go and.
Then we have the committee basically come back together, and we craft all the regulations.
Right, but we don't approve the regulation.
Okay.
Right, they have, the regulation is bound by the policy that we've approved.
Okay.
And just for clarification, so we have come before you recently, I think, with the redistricting policy.
Right.
And so after some comments from the board or suggestions, we came back and did what we would call like a second first reading.
Yep.
Do you want us to do that before public comment, which would, it would push our timeframe, which is fine? So essentially, our timeline would be the August 13th.
No, I, I think it's fine, because, I mean, I, I mean, I'm speaking myself, you guys, I mean, wordsmithing, I don't think, I don't think the intent of the policy is changing at all.
Correct.
And then that way, you, if it goes to public comment, then if anyone else has anything else, and that all can be incorporated at the same time, and then we're not delaying it.
Okay.
So, because, you know, I would like to at least have the policy statement out as close to the start of the school year as possible, right? Just so we're not dropping this on people in, like, November.
Right. The biggest thing is to recognize that students are accumulating debt right now.
Correct.
And the school system is tracking that debt, and the school system is holding students and families accountable for it, we just don't have a.
Framework.
A, a, yes, a dedicated policy just for this, and then the attendant regulations.
Right, well, plus, we want it consistent across all the schools, too, and I'm sure right now it's not.
No.
I know that's shocking, but.
It's a big county.
And also, not only can parents speak at public comment, they can write the Board of Education at boes@smcp.org, and we will all get their comments. So if they can't come physically for public comment, they can write us with their comments on this policy.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Any other questions?
So we'll stick with our current timeline.
I think that's perfect, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that's good. Unless anyone has any other thoughts? Nope, okay. All right, now.
Thank you.
Second time, thank you.
Thank you.
So is this the six flags?